Good evening, everybody. Welcome and thank you for joining us for the FDOT District 6 Five-Year Tentative Work Program Public Hearing. We're going to get started with our formal hearing around 6:20 this evening. That will allow attendees to join us in the room and also to join us online. For those of the people who are here in the room, we invite you to visit the tables that are around the room to learn about different projects and get updates on our ongoing construction projects. For those of you who are joining us virtually, we ask you to watch our upcoming video that displays information about ongoing construction projects in the district. Thank you very much. Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties' Major Construction Projects Update.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Zegada, FDOT Construction Project Manager for the I-395, State Road 836, and I-95 Design Build Project. Construction limits on State Road 836 are from Northwest Seventeenth Avenue to I-95. Limits on I-95 extend from Northwest A Street to Northwest Twenty-Ninth Street and I-395 from the interchange to MacArthur-Cosway. Work began in 2019 and is scheduled to be completed in late 2027. The project cost is $840 million. Work on State Road 836 includes double-decking the roadway from Northwest Seventeenth Avenue to I-95 and adding an additional lane on the ramp to northbound I-95, which has been already open to traffic. I-95 includes concrete pavement replacement from Northwest Twenty-Ninth Street to Northwest A Street. I-395 will be completed, reconstructed, and includes a signature bridge and over 30 acres of community space. Ongoing activities on State Road 836 include construction of foundations, piers, and installation of caps for the double-decked roadway. The pavement replacement between Northwest Twenty-Ninth Street and Northwest Seventeenth Street has already been completed, and work continues south of Northwest Seventeenth Street and the State Road 836, and I-395 ramps connecting to I-95. The signature bridge, center support pier, and four of the six arches are currently under construction, as well as the bridge linking the signature bridge to I-95 and State Road 836.
The Florida Department of Transportation is reconstructing Okeechobee Road. This 10-mile corridor extends from the Broward County line to the State Road 826 Palmetto Expressway. There are seven project segments. Two are managed by Florida's Turnpike Enterprise. The remaining five are managed by FDOT, with two segments currently under construction. Construction activities began early 2022, and all work is scheduled to be completed by 2032 with an estimated cost of $595 million. These efforts are part of FDOT's mission to improve safety, enhance mobility along the Strategic Intermodal Systems Corridor, and inspire innovative transportation solutions connecting commuters throughout Miami-Dade County.
Hi, I'm Colin Johnson, FDOT Construction Project Manager for Segment 1, which extends from the Broward County line to west of Florida's Turnpike. This project includes widening of Okeechobee Road, improving the turning radius and extending turn lanes at all intersections, realigning the frontage roads and intersections, enhancing safety by improving the guardrails along the canal and medians, upgrading pavement markings, signalization, and lighting, and installing an intelligent transportation system and its hub building. Currently, the crews are working towards completing widening and paving the frontage roads, finalizing asphalt and concrete surface in various locations, installing permanent signage and pavement markings, and reopening all travel lanes throughout the entirety of the limits. This segment is scheduled for completion fall 2023 with an estimated cost of $42.5 million.
Hi, I'm George Hoffman, FDOT Construction Manager for Segment 2, which extends from east of northwest 107th Avenue to east of northwest 116th Way. This project includes adding a second-level overpass on State Road 25, US 27, Okeechobee Road to cross northwest 116th Way, providing new access ramps to and from Frontage Road and High Lea Gardens High School, widening the roadway in the two bridges over the Miami Canal, improving substandard turning radii and overall traffic operations, reconstructing Okeechobee Road with concrete pavement, installing new traffic signals, reconstructing existing intersections, and adding intelligent transportation systems devices, providing sidewalks and bicycle lanes on Frontage Road and northwest 116th Way, and new guardrail, medians, and shoulder concrete barrier walls on Okeechobee Road, upgrading traffic and pedestrian signage, pavement markings, signalization, and lighting. Currently, the crews are working toward finalizing the reconstruction of the east side of northwest 116th Way Bridge, the intersections of High Lea Gardens Boulevard at Frontage Road, and northwest 116th Way at Northwest South River Drive. We are also installing the bridge walls and structural beams as part of the second-level overpass and placing concrete in various locations along Okeechobee Road. In order to maintain protected work zones, there are several traffic shifts and detours in place. The overall purpose is to improve traffic operations and safety along Okeechobee Road. This segment is scheduled for completion by winter of 2025 with an estimated cost of $105.6 million.
Hi, I'm Carmen Negron, FDOT Construction Project Manager for the Florida Keys Coast Pilot Project, which extends from mile marker zero to mile marker 112.5 on US-1 in Monroe County. Construction activities for this project began in early 2022, and the estimated construction cost is about $5.3 million. This project will incorporate technology to allow communication between existing infrastructure and vehicles that have been equipped with connected vehicle technology. Onboard units are being installed into public service vehicles, including cars, trucks, buses, and emergency vehicles. Roadside units composed of sensors and cameras have been installed at traffic lights, emergency signals, and pedestrian crossings to establish communications with the onboard units. This will enable a real-time exchange of traffic information to notify connected vehicles about road conditions such as traffic incidents, pedestrian or cyclist presence, work zones, and other roadway updates. Current construction activities include completing installation of equipment in 250 fleet vehicles operated by both FDOT and municipalities, and testing and establishing connections between disconnected vehicles and signal systems along US-1.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Pandora, the FDOT Construction Manager for the Tamiami Trail Next Steps Phase 2 Project. This design-build project extends along State Road 90, Tamiami Trail, from east of the Value Jet 592 Memorial to about 1.5 miles west of Chrome Avenue. The project design started in fall of 2020, and construction activities began in the spring of 2021. All work is currently scheduled to be completed by fall of 2025, and the estimated cost is $57 million. This project, in partnership with the National Park Service, will complete the remaining 6.7 miles of the Tamiami Trail Next Steps Phase 2 Project. It will allow for an additional 75 to 80 billion gallons of water a year to flow south into the Everglades National Park and Florida Bay. This project includes building six new bridges, improving seven existing culvert crossings, and elevating sections of Tamiami Trail. Currently, crews are working within Segment 2 of the project near Gator Park and Cooper Town, and in Segment 3 of the project near pump station S-334. Work includes clearing and removing vegetation and subsoil, performing roadway construction and bridge substructure work, and constructing and installing culvert headwalls.
Hi, I'm John Garcia, FDOT Construction Project Manager for the Northeast Seventy-Ninth Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. The Northeast Seventy-Ninth Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project extends along State Road 934, Northeast Seventy-Ninth Street over the Intracoastal Waterway. Construction activities for this project began in March 2023. Work is scheduled to be completed in fall of 2024 with an estimated cost of $14.75 million. The bridge improvements include replacing structural, mechanical, and electrical bridge components on both the east and west drawbridges, replacing the existing fender system at the east drawbridge, and performing control house improvements at both drawbridges, including replacing all windows and doors, AC systems, replacing the backup generator, plumbing, and connecting the west bridge to the city sanitary sewer system. Currently, crews are working at the Northeast Seventy-Ninth Street Western Most Drawbridge. Work is ongoing on top and below the bridge. Work includes performing structural, electrical, and mechanical rehabilitation, performing spanlock replacement, and installing generator and tenderhouse renovations.
Hi, I'm Manny Espinaldi, Resident Engineer and FDOT Project Manager for the State Road 826 Palmetto Expressway Capacity Project, which extends from just south of Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street to just north of Northwest 154th Street. Construction began in April of 2022 and is expected to be completed by winter of 2024. The estimated cost of this project is $66 million. The scope includes modifying the flyover from westbound Northwest 103rd Street, also known as West Forty-Ninth Street, to southbound Palmetto Expressway, and widening the southbound Palmetto Bridge over northwest 103rd Street to create an additional non-toed lane. It also includes relocating the southbound express lane entrance from northwest 154th Street to northwest 103rd Street. Currently, crews are working to modify the northwest 103rd Street flyover to make room for the additional lane on the southbound State Road 826 through northwest 103rd Street interchange. Crews are also working to upgrade the drainage facilities on the southbound State Road 826, as well as on the frontage roads. Nighttime roadway closures are ongoing in order to perform the work.
Hi, I'm Manny Espinaldi, FDOT Resident Engineer for the Golden Glades Interchange Enhancement Project. The project area consists of State Road 9A, also known as I-95, State Road 826, the Palmetto Expressway, Florida's Turnpike, State Road 9, and State Road 7, also known as US 441 and Northwest Seventh Avenue in northeast Miami-Dade County. The proposed enhancements to the GGI include several miles of roadway and ramps. Major items of work include rebuilding and realigning numerous ramps throughout the interchange, rebuilding and widening sections of I-95 to accommodate additional lanes and connections, rebuilding the pedestrian bridge along I-95 at northwest 147th Street to enhance pedestrian safety to the area schools, replacing areas of noise walls along I-95 between northwest 140th Street and North Biscayne River Drive, and performing roadway and bridge work within the Biscayne Gardens neighborhood. The project benefits include enhancing connectivity between the five major roadways, improving multimodal use for the transit and freight communities, increasing emergency access and incident response times, and providing a direct connection ramp from eastbound Palmetto Expressway to northbound I-95. The department looks forward to implementing these regional mobility enhancements to improve the commuting experience not only for the residents and visitors of Miami-Dade County, but to those in neighboring Broward County as well.
Hi, I'm John Garcia, the FDOT Construction Senior Project Manager for the Northeast 203rd Street Enhancement Project, which extends along Northeast 203rd Street, Ivy's Abbey Road, between State Road 5, US-1, Biscayne Boulevard, and West Dixie Highway. The project started in fall 2021 and is expected to be completed by late 2024, and has an estimated cost of $41.3 million. The project improves safety for pedestrians and motorists. It replaces the aggrade railroad crossing in this highly congested intersection with new vehicular and pedestrian bridges. It will also provide two additional eastbound lanes along Northeast 203rd Street and provides a dedicated bicycle lane along a section of West Dixie Highway. Recently, the new southbound Biscayne Boulevard ramp to westbound Northeast 203rd Street opened for motorists, marking a major milestone for the project. Currently, the contractor continues constructing the new ramp connections to Northeast 203rd Street and Biscayne Boulevard. They are also building the towers for the future pedestrian bridge over West Dixie Highway, and working on widening southbound Biscayne Boulevard south of Ivy's Abbey Road. Utilities are working in the area as well.
Hi, I'm George Hoffman, FDOT Construction Manager overseeing Monroe County projects from Key Largo to Key West. In this video, I will highlight three projects along State Road 5, US-1 Overseas Highway. The first project includes work taking place along the Channel 5 Bridge at mile marker 71. Construction activities began early 2021, and all work is scheduled to be complete by late 2024. The approximate cost of this project is $7.6 million. The scope of this project involves repairing foundations, piers, and columns. Most of the work will take place underneath the bridge. Current activities include performing drill shaft foundation and column repairs with minimal impacts to the traveling public. The next project is a resiliency project along State Road 5, US-1 Overseas Highway from mile marker 70 to mile marker 80. Construction activities began early 2022, and all work is scheduled to be complete by late 2023. The approximate cost of this project is $18.6 million. The scope of this project involves raising, repaving, and restriping the roadway and shoulders, improving drainage, tying new roadway into the shoreline protection system along Seaux Beach, and adding guardrail. Work also includes upgrading bicycle features at the shared-use path crossing locations. The contractor will continue paving at night with lane closures between mile marker 72 and mile marker 75 in both the northbound and southbound directions through mid-October. The last project is located in Key West. FDOT is constructing a resiliency and roadway improvement project along State Road 81A, South Roosevelt Boulevard, extending from Bertha Street to the end of Smothers Beach. Construction on this project began in January 2023, and all work is tentatively scheduled to be completed in spring of 2025. This is part of a $28.3 million project grouping, and the cost for this section totals approximately $23.3 million. Mitigation efforts for tidal flooding and stormwater runoff include raising the roadway, repairing and closing retaining wall gaps, installing a stormwater pump station system, and upgrading storm drainage. Work also includes reconstructing the existing promenade, upgrading curb ramps, adding a section of sidewalk along the north side of the road, repaving and restriping the roadway. Added safety improvements include three pedestrian crosswalks with pedestrian hybrid beacons, along with new signage and pavement markings. Currently, the contractor is demolishing the promenade and installing drainage structures along the south side of the roadway. Sheet piles installation and well drilling for the pump station are also underway. Roadway traffic is reduced to a single lane in each direction along the north side of the roadway. A pedestrian pathway runs along the work area, and temporary crosswalks are in place to maintain beach access.
Hi, I'm Manny Espinaldi, FDOT Resident Engineer for Special Projects and the Project Engineer for State Road 90, Southwest A Street Pedestrian Bridge, which will span southwest A Street and the C-4 Canal connecting the City of Sweetwater and Florida International University Modesto A Medic Campus. The project includes building a pedestrian bridge just west of northwest 109th Avenue, building pedestrian plazas with elevators and stairs on the north and south landings, installing a signalized east-west crosswalk on southwest 109th Avenue, upgrading pedestrian signals, signs, and curb ramps, and closing the historical bridge over the C-4 Canal east of southwest 109th Avenue. FDOT worked closely with our project partners, including FIU and the City of Sweetwater, to bring this important safety project to fruition. As we get nearer to construction, the department will host a public meeting for all interested citizens and officials to learn about the construction phasing and the maintenance of traffic.
For more information, visit www.southflroads.com. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to get started with our work program public hearing. If people who are here in the room would please sit down in your chairs, I would appreciate it so we can get going here. All right, thank you very much. Again, welcome for joining us for the FDOT District 6 Five-Year Tentative Work Program Public Hearing. My name is Tish Berger. I'm the Communications Manager for FDOT District 6, and I'm going to go over some housekeeping rules before we actually get started. For those of you who are here in this room, know that we have ADA restrooms located in the breezeway just outside the rear auditorium doors. We have two exit doors in the rear of the building and two exit doors in the front of the auditorium. If for any reason there is an emergency evacuation, please quickly exit the nearest door and report to Meeting Point 4, which is located on the east side of the auditorium. That's to my right, to your left. As soon as you arrive there, please let your presence be known so we can count you as being part of this facility. Do not re-enter the auditorium until the all-clear has been given. There is an AID located on the east wall next to the exit door, and a first aid kit on the back wall of the auditorium. Water fountains are located in the breezeway immediately outside the rear doors between the restrooms. All right, now we're going to ask for translations.
Si usted necesita traducción durante la reunión, por favor levante su mano o puede pedir ayuda de traducción a través del chat y un miembro de nuestro equipo lo asistirá.
Walna, please.
Bonsoir. Sous besoin d'assistance technique au soin service traduction, s'il vous plaît, relez nous na 1 800 418 0524. Merci.
All right, there's nobody here in the room who is requesting a translation, either in Spanish or Haitian Creole. Walna, do we have anybody online? At this time, Tish, I do not see any hands raised requesting translation services. Thank you very much. All right, tonight's agenda includes a welcome from District Secretary Stacy Miller, a brief overview of the rules of engagement, an overview of FDOT and District 6, as well as the Five-Year Tentative Work Program. The presentations will be followed by an open question-and-answer session for those people in the room and also for those who are online. Be sure to take an information package if you have not done so. For those who are participating virtually, you can download all the handouts provided tonight in the handout section of the GoToWebinar control panel. This information is also uploaded on the work program website, www.southflroads.com/work-program. You can also scan the QR code on the screen, and this will take you directly to the website. I would like now to introduce District 6 Secretary Stacy Miller.
Good evening and welcome. I am so pleased to be with you here this evening to discuss the Five-Year Tentative Work Program, whether you're here in person or joining us virtually. First and foremost, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude for you all taking the time out of your very busy schedule to attend this important event. It's not always the easiest, right? Your participation is critical as we collectively set our transportation policies here for District 6. I would also like to acknowledge the dedicated individuals and teams that have worked tirelessly to bring us to this point, including FDOT staff who have joined us here today, our transportation partners, including Miami-Dade Transportation Planning Organization, we have several members here, Miami-Dade County, and Monroe County. This tentative work program reflects FDOT's commitment to work together to deliver transportation solutions for the communities that we serve. Joining me today is Dani Iglesias, the Director of Transportation Development, Rudy Garcia, the Director of Transportation Operations, and Antoinette Adams, our District 6 Program Management Administrator. FDOT is committed to transparency, inclusivity, and community engagement. Your voice matters, and together, we can make informed decisions that will positively impact our district today and into the future. As Secretary of District 6, I am deeply invested in the growth and well-being of our community. Over the years, I've had the privilege of working alongside many dedicated individuals who also share this vision. Together, we have undertaken numerous projects and initiatives aimed at enhancing the quality of life for all of our residents. I encourage each of you to actively participate, ask questions, and share your feedback. Your insight is invaluable in helping us shape the future of District 6. Once again, I thank you for your attendance, and I'm going to hand this back to Tish.
Thank you very much. All right, now we're going to go over the rules of engagement. Before you hear from the team, I'll go over the rules of engagement, so please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. For those joining online, currently, all microphones and other than the presenters are muted and will remain muted until the presentation is completed and we open the floor for questions and answers. For the question-and-answer session, we will take questions from the in-person attendees as well as those who are joining us online. For the folks in the room, we ask that you kindly step up to one of the microphones on either side of the front here, state your name and your address before you give us your comment or your questions. If you have a speaker's card and have filled one out, please give it to a staff member who is in the room so we can make sure that we call on you and you can give us your comment. For the virtual attendees, there are three ways that you can ask questions. You can call 1-800-418-0524. You can use the raise hand feature on the control panel, and we will unmute you and let you ask your question, or you can submit your question by typing it into the chat box. We will call on attendees who are participating virtually to speak in the order raised hands are received, and as time permits. Once your name is called, please ensure you are not self-muted before asking your question or making a comment. If you experience technical difficulty and you're joining us online, you can call Walna Calixte at 786-269-4146, or you can email her at walna@iscprgroup.com. You can also send a message to us in the question box. Please note that public participation is solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. For questions or concerns, please contact the title For questions or concerns, please contact the Title VI Coordinators, who are listed on this slide and on the screen here in the auditorium. The District 6 interim Title VI Coordinator is myself, Tish Berger. 1,000 Northwest 111 Avenue, Miami, Florida, 33172. My phone number is 305-470-5277, and my email address is tish.burger@dot.state.fl.us. To contact our central office Title VI Coordinator, his name is Stefan Kulikowski. He can be reached at 605 Swanee Street, Mail Station 65 in Tallahassee, Florida, 32399. His phone number is 850-414-4742, and his email is stefan.kulikowski@dot.state.fl.us. Now, we'd like to take a moment to recognize the elected officials who have joined us tonight. I'd like to first recognize Chris Rosenberg and Mary Terry Vilches, who are joining us from the Miami-Dade TPO. Thank you very much for coming. You're a very important partner to the Department of Transportation. I know Commissioner Holly Rashine from Monroe County is joining us online. So if we have other elected officials who are here in the room with us, or if we have others online, those in the room, I would appreciate you standing up and telling us, announcing your name. All right, none in the room, so Walna, anybody online other than Commissioner Rashine?
Yes. For the other elected officials joining us online, if you can please utilize the raise hand feature, so that we may acknowledge you. I do see that we have Vice Mayor of Key Colony Beach, Ms. Tom Harding, joining us. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for joining us. And we also have Mayor Sandra Harris with Miami Shores Village joining us as well. And we also have Ann Marie Haskins with Monroe County joining us online. And let's see here, we do have Greg Lewis joining us online as well. I apologize for not acknowledging your municipality. We have Michelle Lincoln with Monroe County joining us online. And let's see, I'm just trying to catch everyone's name. We have quite a few individuals joining us online. I think that is everyone, Tish. Thank you all.
All right, thank you very much. We truly appreciate you taking the time from your busy schedules to join us. Now, I'm going to turn over the presentation to our Director of Transportation Development, Daniel Iglesias.
Tish, the video from...
Oh, sorry, I forgot that. We do, Commissioner Higgins, Miami-Dade County Commissioner Higgins was not able to join us tonight, and she's always been with us for our work program hearings as long as she's been in office, but she did provide us with a video that she wants to share with everybody.
Well, hi, everybody. I'm so sorry I'm not there with you in person. This is the first time I've ever missed since I've been county commissioner. Unfortunately, there's a conflict. I'm actually at the American Public Transportation Association meeting at the same time. I would rather be there in person for what I think is the most important public meeting of every year, to thank the team at FDOT, Dani and Stacy. We appreciate you very much for all you do on amazing projects from roads and bridges and transit. It really makes a difference. This year, as I look at the work plan, I'm very excited to see advances made, particularly in some of our rapid transit corridors, obviously the construction of the South Corridor, but your work to very quickly advance the PDNE on the North Corridor is very important to the county, as we are looking to get federal funds through the infrastructure investment and Jobs Act while those funds are available. We also appreciate your commitment to the Northeast Corridor to bring commuter rail to a very densely populated, overly trafficked part of our county. And of course, BayLink, we know we're working hand in glove with you to find a good solution to bring Metro mover service over to Miami Beach to alleviate the horrible traffic that occurs on a daily basis and is just exacerbated during our tourist season and anytime we have special events. This is a great project, and we really look forward to making sure that our workforce, who can't afford to live on Miami Beach, can get there quickly and efficiently. On the Little Havana side in District 5, residents are very excited for improved bus service as we do the demonstration BRT project and then work to advance the full corridor all the way out to FIU and beyond. So appreciate you restarting that study and being so diligent in that complete project, which will really make a difference on basically our busiest bus routes, which also serve a lot of low-income residents. So thanks for that. And then last but not least, anything you can do on the Signature Bridge project to alleviate the flooding that continues to happen on Biscayne Boulevard. And I know construction sometimes makes it hard, but anything you can do to alleviate that, we have pedestrians and cyclists and cars stranded on a pretty regular basis as we experience rainstorms for there. So that's my wish list for the meeting. Thanks to everybody that's attending in person. Please give FDOT your feedback. They do listen. Thanks and have a great meeting.
All right, now I would like to introduce Dani Iglesias, our Director of Transportation Development.
All right, thank you, Tish. All right, good evening and welcome, everyone. It's great to see everybody here who's participating, both in person and online this evening. We really appreciate you being here with us to learn about the fiscal year '24, '25 through '28, '29 tentative work program. This event is really about getting together with the public and our agency partners, really to showcase our plan to improve infrastructure in our communities throughout Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties. So thank you for your interest and for your participation in tonight's event. I hope you had a chance to watch some of the active projects that were featured from past work program cycles while we waited for our hearing to get started. If you missed this, you can always visit our website to learn more about all the active and upcoming projects FDOT District 6 has underway. These next few slides are going to walk you through a little bit about FDOT's overall vision, priorities, and talk a little bit more about District 6. So the Florida Department of Transportation is committed to ensuring that the state's infrastructure will efficiently serve our residents and visitors now and in the future, with an emphasis on embracing the communities that we serve to achieve their vision and really meet their transportation needs. To better visualize the department's key focus areas that affect our communities, we developed the FDOT compass, which is shown here. Community is the true north of this compass, and it's shown here at the center, with safety as our top priority on the top of the compass, followed by resiliency, supply chain, technology, and workforce development. That's the other key focus areas that are affected by our transportation projects. Each of these elements has a connection with our communities, and they touch the lives of the people that we serve and who use our system. And the FDOT compass very much aligns with our agency's vision as well. Our vision is ultimately one that serves the people of Florida by providing a transportation network that is well-planned, supports economic growth, and has the goal of being congestion and fatality-free. Now, the department's top priorities remain safety and the preservation of the state highway system, but we also prioritize capacity improvements, bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and other projects such as mobility, intelligent transportation systems, projects, and landscaping. Transit, seaports, airports, and rail travel programs are also very important aspects of our priorities, and we coordinate directly with our federal and local governments, including our county commissions, transportation planning organizations, and municipalities. So a little bit more about District 6. District 6 covers both Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties, which is home to more than 2.8 million residents, and they travel more than 59 million miles per day. The state road system includes 700 miles of roadway, which, when we consider all the lanes, totals in excess of 3,190 lane miles. It also includes 645 bridges, 14 of which are movable. And our residents are also served by 44 aviation facilities, two of which offer commercial service and one that is actually a seaplane-based airport. We do offer 78 private airports, two deep-water ports, two rail lines, and two fixed guideway systems with Tri-Rail and Metro-Rail. So with me today is Antoinette Adams, our District 6 Program Management Administrator. Antoinette is going to conduct a short presentation, which includes a video that explains how we incorporate our projects into the work program. So, Antoinette?
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Antoinette Adams, Program Management Administrator for FDOT District 6, and I will be reviewing the tentative work program for, again, fiscal years '24, '25 through fiscal years '28, '29. After the presentation, we'll open the floor for any comments that anyone may have or questions that you may have as well for those in person and those joining us online. In addition to this public hearing, we'll be presenting the tentative work program to both the Miami-Dade County TPO Governing Board, as well as the Monroe County Board of County Commissioners to acknowledge, receive their acknowledgement and their concurrence. With that said, let's begin our presentation. So the work program is essentially a listing of projects that will be funded and carried out in District 6 over the next five years. It is the department's work plan in Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties. It's developed annually and with the collaboration of our local partners. As the projects are identified, schedules are developed, as well, based on priorities. Each year, when they're adopted or the current year projects are completely completed, a new fifth year is added. As you can see here on the slide, we are extremely busy. This is our tentative work program development cycle. During the months of July through September, there is significant interaction with county officials, including elected officials in Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties, to identify projects that they or their constituents would like to include in our tentative work program. The work program team is also very busy balancing to the allocations received. This year, we're on an abbreviated cycle of the tentative work program, so the public hearings, as you can see, occurring a little earlier, hence, are meeting this evening for both Monroe and Miami-Dade County. October through November, Miami-Dade County TPO and the Monroe Board of County Commissioners, again, are provided an opportunity to review the work program and, again, provide their acknowledgement and concurrence. In the month of December, FDOT staff in Tallahassee compiles our district's work program, as well as the other districts around the state, to create a statewide tentative work program. During the same month, the statewide tentative work program is submitted to the Governor's Office, the Florida Legislature, the Florida Transportation Commission, and the Department of Economic Opportunity for Review. Then in January, the Florida Transportation Commission conducts a statewide public hearing to receive public input for the tentative work program, and the Florida Legislature convenes. In July, after appropriations are approved by the legislature, the work program is adopted, and the state secretary adopts the work program, and the cycle begins all over again. As you can see, October is a very busy month for us. The department conducts significant outreach to various committees showcasing our accomplishments during the tentative work program development cycle. All in all, we're very excited about this time of year, because it gives us an opportunity to present our achievements, which ultimately assist various municipalities in meeting their transportation goals. Now, we'll watch a short video that further explains how projects are developed in the tentative work program.
With over 22 million people calling Florida home and 137 million more visiting our great state every year, reliable transportation infrastructure is integral to our state's economy, livability, and resiliency. Stable and long-term planning to meet the transportation needs of residents and visitors is the primary responsibility of the Florida Department of Transportation. Florida's multimodal transportation system includes roadways, bridges, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, airports, seaports, spaceports, rail lines, and transit. State and local transportation officials work together to develop plans and innovative strategies to improve safety and mobility for all users. These plans are carried out by the five-year work program. The FDOT consists of seven districts and the Florida's Turnpike Enterprise. The work program is developed through these districts, working with local governments, metropolitan planning organizations, other agencies, and the public. The work program contains projects in different stages: planning, project development and environment, design, right-of-way, construction, and maintenance. Through the work program process, the state's transportation priorities are established. After work program public hearings are held in each FDOT district, public comments have been accepted, local governments have endorsed the plan, and the Florida Transportation Commission and state legislators have approved it, the official five-year work program is adopted by the Secretary of the Florida Department of Transportation on July 1st, the first day of the state's fiscal year. As FDOT develops and updates each year's work program with residents and government partners, it is understood that next July 1st, the current year of the plan is complete, and a new fifth year will be added on. The yearly update produces the new tentative five-year work program. The work program assures we have a prioritized program of transportation choices that result in a better quality of life for the residents and visitors to this beautiful state.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, so now for the good stuff. This slide shows the district's tentative work program funding. We're excited to say that this year, the department actually funded $4.1 billion in projects, which is a little bit shy of last year's total, last year's total of $4.2 billion. So the tentative work program allocates funding to various categories, and with the top four categories being the state highway system and other road construction, which primarily is interstate and arterial construction, as well as state and federal grant programs. So that's $957 million. Operation Maintenance of the State Highway System, product support, which includes our project development and environmental phases, design, construction phases, also, or CEI phases, and those, anything that supports the construction project. Then we have our modal development phase, which is broken into various categories. Aviation, for example, we didn't highlight on this, but you know, aviation, we provide $141 million to our partners to assist with aviation improvements. Also transit, you'll see during the presentation that we have a project or two regarding transit, that's $307 million, as well as seaport and intermodal funding as well. So overall, there's $510 million of the $4.1 billion attributed to modal, and we're very excited about that. Also, it should be noted that, if you go back one more time, it should be noted that, like everyone else, the department experienced material, cost increases, labor shortages, inflation, and the like, just like everyone else, supply chain challenges as well. Cost increases were experienced... Cost increases were experienced on mostly all of our projects, but we made every effort to keep the existing projects programmed in the work program and added new projects where feasible. So for a listing of all projects, again, please refer to the public hearing document that's in your packet. There are some packets in the back of the room, but you can also access them online as well. So right now, we'd like to showcase a few projects that are in both counties that were planned in our tentative work program. We will start with Monroe County, the major projects over the next few years. The first project is State Road 5 Bahia-Honda Channel Bridge Rehabilitation. This bridge repair and rehabilitation project will address deficiencies on the Bahia-Honda Channel, which is an essential bridge serving the Lower Keys. The objective of this project is to preserve the bridge and extend its service life. The scope of work includes the repair of the bridge's concrete elements, such as the deck, beams, and columns, including repair of the existing and insulation of new cathodic protection systems to mitigate and prevent against further corrosion. Most of the repairs will be below the deck, minimizing impacts to the traveling public. Any necessary lane closures will take place during off-peak hours and will not take place on holidays or during other important events. Design for this project is currently underway, and construction is slated for fiscal year 2025 at an estimated cost of $18.1 million. State Road 5 Long Key Bridge Replacement. The purpose and need of this project development and environmental study is to evaluate the replacement of the Long Key Bridge, address bridge deficiencies, assess roadway capacity and safety needs, evaluate mobility, improve evacuation and emergency response times and evaluate bicycle and pedestrian needs. The study will consider engineering and environmental analysis and public input. So the PDNE for this phase is currently underway. Design is slated for fiscal year 2025, and construction is programmed in fiscal year 2027 at approximately $203 million for construction. State Road 5 Seven Mile Bridge Rehab and Replacement. Two separate improvements are programmed for this bridge, a rehabilitation project and a full replacement. The bridge repair and rehabilitation project will address deficiencies on the seven-mile bridge along State Road 5 over Millsor Channel, which is an essential bridge connecting the Middle and Lower Keys. The objective of this project is to preserve the bridge in good condition until it is replaced. The scope of work includes the repair of the bridge's elements below the bridge deck, including columns, thus minimizing the traveling, impacts to the traveling public. Any necessary lane closures will take place during off-peak hours and will not take place on holidays or during other important events. The design for the rehabilitation project is currently underway, and construction is in fiscal year 2026 at an estimated cost of $16 million. In addition to the rehabilitation project, the department will conduct a project development and environmental study to evaluate the replacement of the seven-mile bridge. The project study limits extend from milepost 8.9 to milepost 15.7, a total distance of about 6.8 miles. The project limits will also extend to accommodate potential construction limits, roadway transitions to the bridge, additional lanes being added or dropped at the intersections, major utility relocations, and other needed improvements. The PDNE study is current in fiscal year 2024. Design is in fiscal year 2026, and construction is funded outside our tentative work program, but it's in fiscal year 2030, which will be here next year, at a cost of $659 million. State Road 5 Snake Creek Bridge Replacement. The purpose of this project is to evaluate alternatives and environmental impacts to address the deficient operational conditions along overseas highway from north of mile marker 84 to north of mile marker 87, which includes the Snake Creek Bridge in Isla Marada, Village of Islands, within Monroe County. State Road 5 Overseas Highway currently experiences intermittent congestion north and south of the Snake Creek Bridge as a result of periodic openings of the existing drawbridge. Traffic congestion on the overseas highway due to Snake Creek Bridge openings has been a subject of local concern over the past several years. This project will evaluate rehabilitation and replacement conditions or options regarding the bridge to achieve unrestricted vessel and vehicle traffic flow. Other goals of this project will address safety deficiencies to accommodate heavy pedestrian and bicycle traffic within the area. The study involves the potential replacement of the last remaining bascule bridge in the Florida Keys, the Snake Creek Bridge, with a fixed bridge to allow unrestricted vehicle and vessel traffic flow. Protected sidewalks and bicycle lanes will be considered on both sides with proposed bridge improvements. The PDNE will also analyze whether to relocate the current weigh station or replace it with a weigh-in motion station. The feasibility for this project, feasibility study, was completed in fiscal year 2019, and the PDNE is currently funded in fiscal year 2026 for this effort. Florida Keys Overseas Heritage Trail. This project will design and construct a multi-use trail segment on Sugarloaf Key. The project begins at the existing Florida Keys Overseas Heritage Terminus to the intersection of US 1 and Johnson Road on the Atlantic side of State Road 5 or approximately mile marker 19.25. The trail will consist of new asphalt, which will tie into the existing trail segments at the north and south termini. Improvements will be, will consist of a boardwalk trail, gravity and bulkhead retaining walls, and this section or trail will require significant use of retaining structures due to extensive corrosion, and unstable soil conditions along the shoreline in the proposed trail area. Construction will also be immediately adjacent to wetlands and mangrove hammocks along several sections of the trail. Project improvements will also close significant gaps in the trail. Design is currently underway. The Department of Transportation will enter into an agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, who was awarded a $10 million Sun Trail Grant to construct this project. The construction is scheduled for fiscal year 2028. Now let's review some of the major projects in Miami Dade County, beginning with Alton Road. The Alton Road reconstruction projects are located within the city of Miami Beach in Miami Dade County. The entire work quarter extends from Michigan Avenue to Allison Road. For fiscal purposes, the quarter has been divided into four sections in the work program: Michigan Avenue to Ed Sullivan Drive of 43rd Street, 43rd Street to 48th Street, 48th Street to 57th Street, and 57th Street to Allison Road. The main purpose of this project is to raise the roadway for resiliency of the quarter, extend and preserve the service life of the payment for future transportation demand, provide additional accommodations for pedestrian and bicyclists, and enhance safety for all roadway users. The primary scope consists of milling, resurfacing, shoulder widening, drainage, infrastructure, signalization, lighting, signing and pavement markings, and landscape improvements. It should also be noted that two pump stations will be constructed on the project segment from Michigan to Ed Sullivan. One pump station will be constructed on the segment from 43rd to 48th, and one pump station will be constructed on the segment from 57th to Allison Road. Utilities will also be updated and coordinated with the city of Miami Beach. Design for the entire quarter is currently underway. For segment Michigan Avenue to Ed Sullivan Drive, the construction is funded in fiscal year 2025 at approximately $47 million. Construction for the northern three segments remain unfunded. The department will make every effort during its tentative work program development cycles to see if we can fund those additional segments. State Road 968 Flagler Street and Southwest First Street Demonstration Project. In early 2022, FDOT collaborated closely with the Miami Dade Department of Transportation and Public Works and proposed a joint-agency recommendation for the implementation of a demonstration project to provide additional data for the continuation of the Flagler Street Bus Rapid Transit Study from the Homestead extension of the Florida Turnpike to Biscayne Boulevard. On March 3rd, 2022, the TPO Governing Board adopted a resolution supporting the implementation of a Flagler Street Smart Plan Demonstration Project. The demonstration project will consist of repurposing the outside lanes into a business access and transit lanes and applying appropriate pavement markings, included, including red surface treatments on the lanes. The implementation of the demonstration project will provide additional key performance data that would otherwise not be available for the continuation of the PDNE Tier 3. Data collection will allow FDOT, Miami Dade County TPO, and the Miami Dade County DTPW to jointly evaluate and determine the feasibility of a dedicated curbside rapid transit lane concept. The design for this project is currently underway, and we will receive bids for the construction in March 2024. Our current estimate is $5.5 million. Flagler Quarter. In January 2021, the Miami Dade Transportation Planning Organization Governing Board adopted Resolution 7, 2021, supporting FDOT's curbside business access transit, or BAT, lanes on the easternmost segment of the project quarter, Flagler Street and Southwest First Street, from 24th Avenue to 6th Avenue. Based on the TPO's resolution support for a specific segment of the recommended alternative, FDOT, with the support of its transportation agency partners, faced an overall Flagler Street Premium Transit PDNE study on hold. In March 2022, FDOT initiated the design implementation of the demonstration project based on the TPO Resolution 13, 2022. FDOT evaluated operations and benefits of the demonstration project and report a project performance outcomes to the TPO Board. In April 2023, TPO Resolution 1923 urged FDOT to consider conversion of travel lanes for bus access transit lanes along the entire Flagler Quarter. The Flagler Quarter PDNE study will be restarted this year, as stated earlier, like Commissioner Higgins, at a cost of $6.5 million. It's programmed for this effort. North Quarter. The department is conducting a project development and environmental study on the implementation of rapid transit along Northwest 27th Avenue. The North Quarter consists of implementing premium transit service, heavy rail transit or Metro-Rail, and infrastructure along 27th Avenue from Northwest 215th Street or County Line Road to approximately Northwest 62nd Street, Martin Luther King Jr. Metro-Rail Station. On December 6, 2018, the Miami Dade County TPO adopted Resolution 5218, selecting an elevated fixed guideway transit system as a locally preferred alternative for the North Quarter. On October 31st, 2019, the Miami Dade County TPO adopted Resolution 5519, confirming the selection of elevated heavy rail as the preferred transit technology. FDOT is a lead agency for this project. In May 2023, FDOT and the DTPW collaborated to conduct a value engineering workshop. PDNE will restart on this project as well in this current year, and the department has set aside $5 million for this effort. Northeast Quarter. The department is pleased to partner with the Miami Dade County Department of Transportation and Public Works to assist in funding the Northeast Quarter Smart Commuter Rail Project, which is one of six quarters established for the smart program. Northeast Quarter will provide service along the existing Florida East Coast Railway rail lines that generally run parallel to US 1 and West Dixie Highway between downtown Miami and the city of Aventura on the northeast corner of Miami Dade County. The quarter crosses five canals, transverses seven municipalities, and has a minimum change in elevation. The Northeast Quarter is approximately 13 miles long, connecting two busy transit terminals. The southernmost terminus of the quarter is the Miami Central Station located at the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Northwest 1st Avenue and Northwest 6th Street. The northern terminus of the quarter is the West Aventura Station, which was designed and constructed by Brightline. The purpose of this project is based on the need to increase regional mobility, reduce congestion, and to provide for the transportation need of residents within the county. The project would provide service to individuals who might otherwise commute by motor vehicles. The project would also benefit local transportation by reducing the overall number of vehicles trips taken, and is anticipated to have an overall positive impact on the regional roadway network and local traffic by providing an alternate transportation mode. The department will contribute a total of $103.5 million towards this project over a four-year period, which begins in fiscal year 2025. State Road 9 I-95 Quarter PDNE. There are several project segments programmed in the tentative work program for improvements along State Road 9 I-95. The purpose is to address the deficient operational capacity and relieve existing and future congestion along the I-95 Quarter. This includes the review and analysis of potential impacts for the proposed project on a social, economic, natural, physical, and cultural resource basis in the surrounding environment. Other goals of the project include preserving the operational integrity and regional functionality of I-95 and the regional transportation network by completing, I'm sorry, complementing similar quarter improvements throughout Miami Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach Counties, and enhancing emergency evacuation and response times. Overall, the project will offer enhanced mobility options for motorists and transit users, and will provide additional capacity along the I-95 Quarter throughout Miami Dade County. There are four segments. The first segment is from US 1 to 62nd Street. The PDNE for this project is funded in fiscal year 2025, and the design for this project is funded in fiscal year 2028. The second segment, from 62nd Street to Northwest 143rd Street, PDNE is currently funded in fiscal year 2024. Design is in fiscal year 2027. The next segment, from Northwest 143rd Street to south of Miami Gardens Drive, the PDNE is currently in fiscal year 2028. And the last segment, from Miami Gardens Drive to the Miami Dade Broward County Line, the PDNE is currently underway. Design is anticipated to begin the latter part of this fiscal year. It should be noted, however, that funding years for these segments will be reassessed and possibly reprogrammed in the future. This is to ensure that the PDNE study data is not compromised by the GGI reconstruction project that we recently let and will be under construction at this, at that time. Ludlum Trail Bridges. Miami Dade County will be constructing, constructing a 5.6-mile-long pedestrian bike trail along Ludlum Trail from Southwest 80th Street to Northwest 7th Street. The trail runs along the old railroad quarter, already deactivated, and is very close to Ludlum Road or 67th Avenue, hence the name Ludlum Trail. This project will design and construct three of the six bridges along the trail. At the county's request, the department will administer the design and construction of these three bridges, which are located at the intersection of Southwest 40th Street, Bird Road, Southwest 8th Street, Tamiami Trail, and Flagler Street. The department is working in conjunction with Miami Dade County to move these projects forward. A consultant has already been selected for the design phase, which will begin next month in November. Construction is scheduled for fiscal year 2027 at a current construction estimate of $35 million. Miami Gardens Drive, State Road 60 Reconstruction. This is an operational and safety improvement project along Miami Gardens Drive from east of I-75 to Northwest 57th Avenue, located entirely within my unincorporated Miami Dade County. For fiscal purposes, improvements along this quarter are divided into three segments: from I-75 to 79th Place, 79th Place to Northwest 68th Avenue, and Northwest 68th Avenue to Northwest 57th Avenue. Key improvements include milling and resurfacing, widening to accommodate one additional travel lane in each direction, adding a shared-use path on the north side of Miami Gardens Drive, access management modifications to increase safety, upgrading drainage, lighting, signing, and pavement markings, and adding new vehicular and pedestrian signalization at major intersections. Design for the entire quarter is underway. The segment from I-75 to Northwest 79th Place is funded for construction in fiscal year 2025 at an estimated construction cost of twenty-two million dollars. Efforts will be made during future tentative work program development cycles to fund the eastern segments. Okeechobee Road Reconstruction. There are three remaining segments of Okeechobee Road that are under design but not construction. The following two segments of Okeechobee Road are not in the tentative work program. Why, you may ask, I'll tell you. Still out there? We're excited to note that these two projects were advanced from fiscal year 2025 into current year. Improvements for the project segment from Northwest Eighty-seventh Avenue to Northwest Seventy-ninth Avenue consist of reconstruction of Okeechobee Road using rigid pavement, widening the bridge at Northwest Seventy-ninth Avenue over the Miami Canal, modifying the intersection of Northwest Ninety-fifth Street and Frontage Road, and providing new access from Frontage Road to the west, westbound State Road twenty-five. Again, design is underway, and the construction letting has been advanced to April 2024 at an estimated construction cost of forty-seven million dollars, and we're really excited about that. Its companion project is the next Okeechobee Road, where we'll be constructing new ramps at the interchange of the Palmetto and Okeechobee Road, thus alleviating congestion at the two intersections underneath the Palmetto. As part of this project, the department will widen West Eighteenth Avenue, a City of Hialeah Street that intersects Okeechobee Road, as well as widening the existing off-ramp from northbound State Road eight twenty-six by widening the bridge over the Miami Canal at that location. New drainage, signing and pavement markings and lighting are also proposed. Design is underway, and again, this project will be led with the previously mentioned project in April of 2024 at an estimated construction cost of one hundred and sixty-one million dollars. The last segment of Okeechobee Road Quarter is still in the tentative. That's from Northwest one hundred and sixteen Way to east, to east of Northwest Eighty-seventh Avenue. The improvements include reconstruction of the Okeechobee Road using rigid pavement, building a grade separation on Okeechobee Road and Northwest Eighty-seventh Avenue, reconstructing Eighty-seventh Avenue from south of State Road twenty-five to Northwest one hundred and third Street, realigning Northwest one hundred and third Street, removing existing bridges at Northwest one hundred and fifth Way, and building a new low-level bridge at Northwest one hundred and sixth Street. Design is currently underway for this project, and construction remains in fiscal year 2026 at three hundred and nineteen million dollars. Palmetto Expressway South. The Palmetto Expressway South project is located in the southwest Miami Dade County and extends from US One to Northwest Twenty-fifth Street. The main purpose of this project is to add main line and interchange capacity within the project limits to meet future transportation demands, improve travel time reliability, and to provide long-term mobility options. Improvements consist of adding an untold managed lane in each direction with auxiliary lanes between interchanges at selected locations and other interchange improvements as well. PDNE for this project is currently underway. The design is programmed in fiscal year 2025 at approximately thirty-five million, and the right-of-way phase will begin, we anticipate, in fiscal year 2027. Last but not least is State Road nine thirty-four, Northeast Seventy-ninth Street Bridge Replacement. A project development and environmental study has begun for the replacement of the flat bridges along Northeast Seventy-ninth Street from west of Pelican Harbor Drive to east of Adventure Avenue. The PDNE phase is the first step to evaluate the alternatives and environmental impacts of the project. The department will continue to perform timely repairs to keep the flat bridges in good condition until they are eventually replaced. The repairs of the bridges will not affect any traffic as the work is being performed under the bridges, and any lane closures will occur during nighttime. Following the completion of the PDNE, the design phase of the bridge replacement is slated to begin in fiscal year 2025. Construction for the replacement is programmed in fiscal year 2028 at approximately forty-nine million dollars. Don't do anything cheap here, as you can see. That concludes a review of some of the products, the major projects. For a complete listing of products, again, please see our public hearing documents in the back. They're also available online on our website. And one more thing. Tonight, we're excited to unveil the new community engagement tool. This year, we've developed an interactive virtual meeting room that gives you a three hundred and sixty-degree view of projects using AI technology. Everything you've heard, seen, and seen tonight is not only published on our website, but you can also walk around this virtual room, watch, listen, and learn about our various projects and other programs that we offer here in the district. So please feel free to scan the QR code that's here or visit our website, and you will have access to this virtual room, and it is so very cool. With that, I turn this part of the presentation over to Tish to complete the.
Thank you, Antonette. For all of you who are rushing to go to our virtual room, let me just tell you that it will be available online tomorrow morning. We'll have it uploaded and ready to go tomorrow morning. Don't miss it, it's gonna be great. Now we're at our question and answer session. The floor is open for anyone who wants to provide comments regarding the work program. For those joining online, please type your question or comment in the chat or select the raise hand feature, and we will call on you. If you are attending in person, we'd like you and like to voice your comments or questions, please approach the microphone located at the center of the aisle. When called upon before stating your question or comment, please state your full name and address for the record. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes out of courtesy for others who may want to make comments at tonight's hearing. If you wish to leave a longer comment for the record, feel free to dictate to the court reporter located in the back of the room, or you can give your comment in writing on the comment sheet that was provided in your welcome package. Please note the court reporter is located in the back of the room, just in case you didn't hear me the first time. If you have a comment or question but do not feel comfortable voicing it in front of everyone, you can go and talk to the court reporter or leave us a written comment card. I have received two comment cards from people who are here in the room, and I know we have people online who want to ask questions, but I would like first to recognize Senator Renee Garcia, who, former senator, now a Miami Dade County Commissioner, who does have questions for us. Wana, can you help Senator Garcia, please unmute him and let him ask his questions?
Yes, we have Arida Mendez Cartaya representing Senator Garcia's office. If you would like, go ahead and raise, utilize the raise hand feature, Arida, and I will unmute you. Go ahead and click on the red mic next to your name. If you are speaking, we cannot hear you. All right, go ahead and click on the red mic again next to your name. All right, we can, I can read her question. Tish?
Yes, please go ahead. Thank you.
All right, no problem. The first question is, what is the status of the I seventy-five connector roads between one thirty-eighth and one eighty-six? What is the status? Of the I seventy-five connector roads between one thirty-eighth and one eighty-six? That's the first question she has.
So thank you for that question. This is Stacy Miller, District Secretary. We've had a number of conversations with the Senator regarding potential improvements on I seventy-five. FDOT conducted a feasibility study within the last year or so, and we've programmed a project development and environmental study in fiscal year 2029 in order to move that project forward. We are working, of course, on some other improvements on I seventy-five that would impact this particular project development and environmental study, and they're associated with Miami Gardens Drive's improvements. So we are working hand-in-hand with Miami Dade County DTPW, as well as a primary developer in the area, and looking to see how we can collaborate and coordinate those two efforts as we move forward with some improvements in western Miami Dade County.
Thank you, Secretary. Question? Yes, there is. And the second question is, the state highways in Miami Dade is full of debris and dirt. What is the state's schedule and plan to address this?
Good evening. This is Rudy Garcia, Director of Operations. Our plan is that we have a routine mowing cycle, mowing and litter removal cycles in each contract. At the very least, we conduct twenty-four litter removal cycles throughout the year, and we also have an asset maintenance contractor that rides our limited facility, facilities, and they also have a responsibility of removing litter from the highways as well. If there's any particular area that the Senator is concerned with, if he can please notify us, we can make sure that our contractor is keeping up with his routine schedule there in that area.
All right, I'm gonna go to one of our attendees here in the room. We have two comment cards that they has been turned in for people who want to actually get up and make a statement or ask a question. I'd like first to call on Ivan Jimenez.
I believe he should go first, if he stood up first.
That's very nice of you. Nicholas Duran.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ivan. Hi, everyone. My name is Nicholas Duran. My address is ninety-eight sixty Southwest Fourteenth Street. I am the advocacy manager for Transit Alliance Miami. For those who don't know us, we are a nonprofit that amplifies the voices of over three hundred thousand people who depend and ride Miami Dade Transit every single day. We also advocate for the safety and the dignity and the dignity of all road users, especially our cyclists and pedestrians, which I think we can agree are the most vulnerable among us when it comes to our mobility. And currently, we are on the lead community partner on behalf, well, leading the outreach and engagement on behalf of Miami Dade County for the Better Bus Network, which we are very excited launches next month. So that's a major, major win for bus frequency in the county. So, yeah, I don't really have any questions, but really just a series of comments on really the type of work that's being done, but also specifically on process as well. But I guess I'll start with, I really also commending you on the good things that are happening with the, specifically the Flagler Corridor, the North Corridor, and Northeast Corridor. It's very, very exciting to have some additional options in the future in terms of our, the different modalities that we can access. I did see in the, the work plan that there are a number of Safe routes to school projects, so that's fantastic. We would love to see more of that. BRT like the Flagler Corridor, but specifically if we could reignite conversation around the Kendall Corridor, which has long been promised. We are out in the field, we're talking to people, and specifically young people who live in, in West Kendall. I know there are issues in terms of zoning and there are legacy problems in terms between different generations where people might disagree, but young people who live there want to see different opportunities. And people my age and my age group can't afford cars. So that's one point that I would like to make. And another, as far as certain projects that are not down the pipeline per se, but are being under consideration, specifically the I three ninety-five Julia Tuttle Causeway. We do have some concerns about that specifically environmental, and we think in terms of cost efficiency and, and moving people efficiently, we think there are better ways to do that. And our concerns in this are really how transit seems to be an afterthought with the, the Bus on Shoulder project in lieu of a dedicated bus lane, for example, or the shared use path for bikes and pedestrians, which has been offset to an independent right-of-way. We have concerns about whether or not that's going to pass through the NEPA process, the National Environmental Policy Act. It's strange that that's the, might be the first on the chopping block because of environmental concerns in a project of that scope. So we hope that that ultimately gets integrated and people have additional options to get across the Julia Tuttle, across Biscayne Bay, without having to drive. And then another point, just specifically on climate, if I can. Miami Dade County is, we are ground zero for climate change in the United States. We have one point seven billion dollars in annual revenue that we risk losing by twenty seventy because of flooding and other impacts. So I, I've heard it said in meetings before by consultants representing certain projects, I think the I three ninety-five specifically, that improving the free-flow conditions of traffic reduces emissions, and theoretically that might be true, but we know that when we induce additional demand and there, we are increasing pressures on a particular roadway and because of the development trends, that emissions in turn increase over time. So something to be cognizant of. And another, another thing is that the more we pave, the greater we flood. So if we can really get serious about considering alternative materials, permeable pavement and concrete, things that are doing other, providing other benefits for us, aside from just giving us pavement to drive on. If we can get that water back into our aquifers to recharge, that would be really great. And then lastly, we fund corridor planning studies. I think we should also study the emissions that result from these projects, whether it be in terms of concrete production, or like I said, induced demand across a variety of different possible scenarios. And, and lastly, I'll just say to end, it's about the community outreach and engagement process. I think there's some really great steps that are being done in terms of accessibility here, providing translation services and things like that. But frankly, as someone from the public or just seeing this from outsider, I come from the privilege, like, I'm paid to do this. But as a resident, it's frankly very challenging to see where, I was tickled to find out the, the five-year work plan was a hundred and fifty-six page spreadsheet with a number of different, a lot of different line items. It's very difficult to access from someone who is an outsider in this space. And I think if we can start to break down those hurdles for people in terms of understanding the content and what's being discussed here for the public and sort of popularize it in a way, I think that's a win for everybody. And, and on that note, really what we're just asking for is transparency, accessibility, and accountability when it's necessary. We'd like to work together, have and engage in a consistent dialogue with each other. I noticed when we were registering to speak, there was no community partner option as far as like why I might be attending. I think that's a more consistent effort, like that can really build, go a long way in building trust and encouraging conversations in good faith. And if there's anything I can end with, if there was any sort of ask, really, it's just that if we can take some more of this funding that, that is dedicated to highway and roadway projects and really shift it towards other projects like public transportation and micro-mobility safety, even just a small portion of that can make a huge difference in moving people more effectively and in improving safety and in saving lives. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. And now, Mr. Jimenez.
My name, my name is Ivan Jimenez. I live in twelve twenty-four Southwest one hundred and fourth Court, three three one seven four, very near to FDOT headquarters. I am a volunteer for Transit Alliance, but I do not work for them. I am very ignorant in a lot of Florida's transportation projects, et cetera, and I'm learning a lot today, so thank you. For example, I'm very grateful that you guys are, are working on the BAT and the BRT projects with Miami Dade Public Transportation. So for me, my main focus regarding FDOT projects is, I think FDOT should focus more on constructing complete streets. By complete streets, I mean moving away from the car-centric design that has been the US model for the past seventy years excluding New York City. So in other words, having pathways that allow pedestrians to walk through with shade, bicyclists that do not have to worry about strobes, in other words, streets that are designed to make roads go faster for cars, which do lead to a lot of car rage. And that is something that's very prevalent here in Miami, and we all understand that when we drive, we tend to be very angry. So I think that's something we should take into consideration, specifically in areas where there's large intersections like the Turnpike or the Expressway or the Okeechobee Road project, which is multiple ramps all in one. So moving on, I, I think that part of the way that FDOT can actually make an even bigger difference from what it's already doing in these large projects is moving away from the Green Book and focus more on NOTA. The Green Book was created in nineteen seventies, dedicated to South Florida's population, and it has long since doubled since that time. Now, I have an example here, which I'll pass on to you guys afterwards. It's how I, providing accessible mobility for citizens actually can have a lot of benefits and even reduce traffic congestion, for example. This is the Ronald Reagan Turnpike, this is a house, and then here's Publix. We all love Publix, Publix Subs are the best, right? Thank you. So just here alone is eight hundred feet, but due to the Ronald Reagan. But due to the Ronald Reagan Turnpike blocking the intersection, we have to go around and that's 23 feet, 23 minutes. But if we would create a little pathway that shortened it to three minutes, and you do not have to drive a car to go around to get to the Publix. You can just go with a cart, you know, a bicycle, a bookbag, and it reduces congestion. A car takes up a lot of space when we think about that. A bus could provide 40 passengers at a time. That's 40 cars on average, 20, if two people ride it. So I do think FDOT is doing great progress in their public transportation programs. But I think that more accessibility and mobility should be included in these projects for citizens like myself, who like Nicholas Duran, I'm young as well, and I cannot afford a car. So lastly, please move away from the Green Book and try to focus on different alternatives such as NACTO. And thank you all. Good night.
Thank you very much. You can leave those with me. I would be happy to take them. Thank you very much. Okay, Walna, I think we'll go to a question online, please.
We have questions online from the chat box, and we also have hands raised. Would you like to address the hands raised? Or would you like for me to read another question?
Let's go to the hands raised, please.
Okay, we can start with Greg Lewis. Go ahead and click on the red mic next to your name to unmute yourself. Greg, can you hear us? If you are speaking weird, we cannot hear you. All right, Greg, we'll come back to you in just a second. All right, Nancy Jackson, go ahead and click on the red mic.
Hi, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everyone. It's Nancy Jackson, 111 Northwest 1st Street, Miami, 33132. I currently work with the Office of Resilience in Miami-Dade County, and I see a lot of my great FDOT colleagues there. So thank you for allowing us a chance to ask a couple of questions. I kind of would like to echo a little bit about what Nicholas Duran was speaking about regarding resilience components of projects. I was watching the video of the projects at six. You know, the 79th Street Causeway is a great example, you know, showing sort of the typical process and what's going on. But I would be, and I think we would all be very interested in learning more about what special components are making that project more resilient and being able to highlight that, you know, whether it be elevation, different kinds of treatments to deal with runoff so that the water quality is more protected, any kind of natural nature-based features possible. Those are just some examples. So that's one thing that I think would be great when y'all are talking about your projects, to be able to also highlight the work you're doing on that. Also wanted to echo my old boss, Eileen Higgins, on the Signature Bridge project. Thinking also about from the, again, from the water quality perspective, keeping all that construction debris battened down and out of the, out of the streets. Because of course, then we do get plumes out into the bay, and we're always trying to work really hard with all of our partners to make sure that doesn't happen. So I just wanted to echo that. And then an actual question I have as opposed to kind of comments is to ask about the possibility for all of the water-oriented projects, the causeways, the roadways, the bridges. If you all allow and approve ecologically engineered or enhanced concrete, which is something that is being used in other big projects around the country, and it helps, I think it's more ecologically environmentally friendly and in some cases can actually enhance natural ecosystems, both by the shape and the content of the additives that they add to the concrete. I've seen a presentation by one company called Eco Concrete, but I know there are many others. And when I asked our Department of Transportation, Public Works, if we could use, or at least try to use those products on our bridges and causeway projects, they mentioned that it needs to be part of an FDOT approved list. So I was just hoping to get some feedback on what the process is for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those comments. And I actually want to thank everyone for their comments so far. We really appreciate this feedback and take your input very seriously. It's very important to us. Nancy, regarding the use of alternative concrete materials, the Florida Department of Transportation has a rigorous process by which we analyze any material that is being used on our facilities. There's actually a process through our Materials Laboratory in Gainesville. And many of the districts also have laboratories as well. But most of our product approval process is through our Gainesville Materials Laboratory. That process ensures that any material that's being used on the state highway system, and in turn, many of our partners use those same products to be assured that it will stand up to the wear and tear that all of our facilities incur, as well as for concrete, and especially in the use of materials used for structures, is that they can withstand the aggressive nature of our environment. So many of the materials that are used elsewhere in the country do not stand up to the saltwater environment that we, and the humidity that we have here in South Florida. So it's exceedingly important that we do rigorous testing, and we're more than happy to provide additional information on how companies can in fact work with us and have their products tested and potentially added to our approved products list.
Great, that's great. I'll follow up on that process. Thank you.
All right, we have a gentleman in the room who's, has a question or a comment. Please proceed and give us your name and your address, please.
Hi, thank you. My name is Dave Dobler. I reside at 800 West Avenue in my beach Florida. Originally, I came here tonight just to hear what the program was about. I'm a clean water advocate primarily focused on Biscayne Bay restoration and recovery. And I also sit on the county's Biscayne Bay Watershed Management Advisory Board. Originally, what I just came to talk about is I was going through about what I might remind everybody here is, is that, you know, what happens on the street ends up in Biscayne Bay, right? So the trash and plastic, the nutrient load that, and then actually Senator Garcia, Senator/Commissioner Garcia, I was thrilled to hear his question on litter control. But trash and plastic nutrients, tire particles, oil, sediment, what lands on your roads and when it rains, that goes out in many cases into Biscayne Bay. And stormwater is, is turning out to be one of the biggest contributors to the seagrass die-off in Biscayne Bay. There are other issues, and it's not your fault, but the water lands on your streets and comes, and goes out into the bay. What I heard today, as I was going around to the different kiosks here, and I was reading some of the documentation, I heard some words, pump stations. I didn't hear bioswales. I heard drainage improvements. I didn't, I didn't hear pollution controls. I heard landscaping improvements. I didn't hear about canopy trees. I heard about resiliency, but I didn't hear about sustainability. FDOT is amazing at building gray infrastructure. My ask is that you also get really good at green infrastructure. I then had a conversation about, you know, so for example, the Julia Tuttle Causeway, one of my favorite roads in, I imagine, unless I lived in Key West, the Seven Mile Bridge would probably be amazing to drive. But when you go across the Julia Tuttle, you see this beautiful, you know, you go up the, the bridge, and it's a gorgeous view. But as you're driving along, I see barrenness. I don't see any mangroves. What an amazing opportunity to have two miles of net new mangrove planting in order to, to protect the roadway and to protect Biscayne Bay and add resiliency. But I then started getting, digging down a little into the Alton Road project, and I saw a presentation a couple of months ago on it. And, you know, that project is removing 80% of the existing large shade trees. And because FP&L will not underground their lines, they're going to be replaced with very short trees, I guess, under 20 feet so that it doesn't impact the lines. We're putting bike paths, and I don't know if anybody lives in Miami, but it gets really hot during the summer, and nobody's going to walk or bike on a, on a, on a shared path that doesn't have, doesn't have shade trees. There's two new pump stations, but they don't have injection wells. They're not going to have advanced pollution controls. And there's no bioswales along a golf course. And golf courses, they love, they love green grass, and they are excluded from any of the fertilizer ordinances. So any water that lands on the golf course that happens to flow into the street is gonna go out into the pump stations and out through Biscayne Bay. So I ask you to retain that water on land and allow it to percolate down as opposed to pumping out into the bay. But I do have one final question, and this is going to be to Mr. Garcia, which is around stormwater maintenance schedules. So I've gotten very familiar with the MS4 stormwater permits and the fact that the state really only requires cleaning the stormwater systems, the storm drain systems, once every five years. Okay, or actually, it's once every two permit cycles, which is technically once every 10 years. So my question is, how frequently does FDOT and its contractors clean the catch basins and clean the stormwater systems? And part B, is that frequent enough?
Thank you for the question. What I can tell you is that we have to follow permits that we've applied for. So the frequency really is like, I believe it's once every two years, unless, unless that we observe flooding, obviously, in, in different areas. And in those cases, we try to clean out those areas more frequently to try to eliminate the situations like the commissioner brought up earlier in her video. That's responsible, I mean, we have a responsibility, I don't know if you've heard this term, it's called Maintenance Rating Program. It's a, for a statute, it's what we have to follow. We're programmed and we're funded to be able to maintain our full system, 80% of it. We, if we maintain 80% of it on a yearly basis, and obviously, it's not the same 80% each year. Well, that's, we're meeting our, the terms that we're required to meet. Actually, District 6 has been pretty good. We've been higher than that. We've been around 84, 85 last year. But that's a frequency to answer your question.
Okay, thank you. What I have learned across Miami-Dade County is that there, that, that people talk about following what DEP requires. However, what we've learned is that what DEP requires is insufficient to protect Biscayne Bay. So my request is that we look at the pollution controls within our stormwater systems, that we look to retain water on land and not just pumping out to Biscayne Bay, because whatever is in that water is affecting our bay. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Walna, let's go to the folks online. I don't know if you were able to resolve some of the speaker issues with the hands raised, or if you want to read out a question in the chat.
Yeah, I can read one of the questions, and there may be a few other individuals with this question. And it is, will the presentation be recorded for viewing later just in case we miss key points?
Yes, this meeting is being recorded, and the presentation will be available. Everybody who is attending online or in person will get a link to the video, and we can put a link on our website for those who are not able to make it here tonight.
And we had a follow-up question from Senator Garcia's office, and they would like to know who should they contact?
They can contact my office. They can contact me directly, and I'll be happy to help them with any questions or coordinate any meetings so we can have, continue the conversation and answer his questions. And my phone number is 305-470-5277. My email is tish, T-I-S-H, dot burger, B-U-R-G-H-E-R, at dot dot state dot FL dot US.
Thank you, Tish. And we have a question from Delroy Peters. And the question is, are any projects or planning in the pipeline for the Golden Glades Interchange?
Yes. The simple answer is yes. Question. The, so it's no longer in the planning stage. We've moved past that, and the Department of Transportation a few weeks ago, actually, what we call bid, but it, it's, we, well, we actually call it a letting, but we bid out the construction project for what we consider the Golden Glades Interchange Light. That is a series of eight projects that cover five facilities between the Florida Department of Transportation District 6 and the Florida Department of Transportation Turnpike Enterprise. So we have, we are in the process of awarding that project. At this time, we anticipate the award to happen in the next few months to sign the contract with our anticipated contractor. And at this time, the construction is five to seven years, depending on some of the conversations that we have with our intended contractor. But, but we have a long road ahead of us, literally and figuratively, as it comes to the Golden Glades Interchange. But we are very excited about the improvements that will occur. We are completing some missing components and some missing movements as part of this improvement process. So much more to come, but that is, at this time, the only anticipated improvements for Golden Glades Interchange.
Thank you, Secretary. And we have one more question that was received in the question panel, and then we can go to the hands that are raised. And the question is, what is the increased number, with the increased number of electric vehicles being proposed to be the future means of transportation in our state and country? How will these road and transportation projects be funded, since many road projects are presently funded mostly with gas tax fee?
Thank you for that question. It's an evolving conversation the Department of Transportation is having, as well as the US Department of Transportation nationally. Actually, as part of the current Federal Transportation Act, there is a commission that is supposed to be formed to evaluate user fees associated with mileage-based use as opposed to our current gas tax, which is both on the federal side and on the state side. Here in the state of Florida, there have been a number of conversations about how to potentially generate revenue from hybrid and electric vehicles. That is not necessarily within the purview of the Florida Department of Transportation. We are included in that conversation in that space, but that is being discussed at the legislative level. And I am sure there will be much more potentially proposed during this legislative session and discussed. But everyone is very well aware that the Department of Transportation's revenue sources, which are predominantly gas tax, do have a point at which they start to diminish. And while you can say there are, there's, there's a variety of different thoughts regarding that diminishment of, of revenue sources, all of these facilities, all of our transit, et cetera, all use that same road network. And at a minimum, we need to maintain that network. So there, it is in discussion, but there is no singular proposal that I'm aware of at this time that's been generated other than the potential for having additional registration fees associated with electric and hybrid vehicles. But again, that will be discussed during the legislative session, potentially in statute.
Thank you, Secretary Miller. And that question was from Ms. Felicia Salazar. And now to our, to the hands that we have raised. And Greg, if you would like And Greg, if you would like to, I see that he dropped off. Let's see here. We can go to Nicholas Raesbeck. Please go ahead and click on the red mic next to your name.
Hi. I guess my first question is, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Great. Well, my name is Nicholas Raesbeck. I live at one two zero four two Southwest 173rd Terrace. It's down by the zoo. And I travel by car about an hour to get to work. And as my budget is slowly forcing me to get rid of my car, I have to travel two hours via bus to be able to get to that same location, that same workplace. So I was wondering for you guys, is there going to be more? I noticed you guys talked about projects testing out dedicated bus lanes on a certain roadway, which I can't remember right now. Are we going to be seeing more of that? And when can we see more of that in the future?
So this might be a multi-part answer that I might ask Danny to assist with. But the department is working in conjunction with the Transportation Planning Organization, the TPO, and the Miami-Dade Department of Transportation and Public Works. It's part of the SMART program, which is the Strategic Miami Area Rapid Transit Program, which contains a number of different modalities, including transit-only lanes or business access lanes. Right now, we are focused on the Flagler Corridor, and we discussed having our demonstration project on Flagler and continuing with the Flagler Project Development and Environmental Study. The Kendall Corridor is currently on hold. That was a very similar project development and environmental study, and that's been put on hold so that we can actually see the results of the Flagler Demonstration Project and be able to utilize some of that information as we move forward. In addition, the Miami-Dade Department of Transportation and Public Works is evaluating what they call the East-West Corridor, and that's another alternative bus-related corridor. Each of these are in various modes of process, or I should say, in various stages of process. In addition, the South Corridor, which is currently under construction, is a project being undertaken by Miami-Dade Department of Transportation and Public Works. That is a $300 million project, $100 million from the Florida Department of Transportation, $100 million from local resources, and $100 million from the Federal Transit Administration. So we have a number of different projects underway, and we are working with Miami-Dade Department of Transportation and Public Works. We're very excited about their better bus network and introducing that. And we continue to work with them to optimize bus facilities and augment their revenue sources. The Florida Department of Transportation, through our Modal Development Office, helps assist with a variety of different projects through their programs as well. So there's a number of different things that are happening. I don't know if Danny, if you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Thank you, Secretary. I would just add that it is a considering factor in all of our projects to really look at ways to handle mobility, not only through capacity improvements with conventional widening, but also contemplating in coordination with Miami-Dade Transit, Department of Transportation, Public Works, alternative modes of transportation. So I'll add that the South Dade Corridor, really, from the description of where you are, would be really the chief improvement that's being contemplated with respect to bus rapid transit. Along with the better bus network that the county is planning to roll out, really, it's going to create a more efficient system for transit use. I'm not sure where your destination is, but from a south-to-north perspective, in the county, the South Corridor, once completed, will provide much more efficient transit, at least based on the operational plan we've seen from the county. We continue to coordinate on our PDNE studies with Miami-Dade County. You know, projects like the Palmetto South project that has been briefly discussed, has been talking about some opportunities to run transit on the Palmetto Expressway. That, you know, is in addition to the capacity improvements, obviously, that are being contemplated with that study. So we continue to have the conversations. It really is a discussion in partnership with Miami-Dade County, as they're the operator of the transit network. But there should be opportunities coming up with more efficient transit being provided to this area of the county.
Actually, if it's all right with you guys, I do have one small component to ask about the SMART program that you mentioned. Is there enough time? So
Yes, go ahead.
To my understanding, as part of the SMART program, there was also an extension of the Metro Rail going north to, if I remember right, the stadium, just in time for the World Cup or something like that. Is that still on, is that still on board? I work all the way into Ralph, so I end up taking the metro as well all the way up. So the farther it goes, the better for me.
So the Florida Department of Transportation, actually, that was one of the projects that Antoinette reviewed, so that is the North Corridor, 27th Avenue. So we are working through the project development and environmental study right now. And as Antoinette noted, we conducted a value engineering study between the department and the county. We are restarting that project development and environmental study and are looking to move forward with that project. While it is, I think, a noble idea that we might be able to get it constructed in time for that event that you mentioned, just the timeline won't work out for us, but we have every intention of moving forward from the project development and environmental study, hopefully into design, eventually purchase right-of-way and construct that project. That is a project of great importance to District Six and to Miami-Dade County and the Department of Transportation and Public Works. We are working collaboratively to make that project come to fruition. It is definitely a goal of ours to make that Metro Rail extension occur.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comments and your questions. And Walna, do we have anybody else on the chat or who wants to talk, who's raised their hand?
Yes, we do have more hands raised. Raymond McElroy, please go ahead and click on the red mic next to your name.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, loud and clear.
Perfect. FDOT, thank you for your time tonight. My name's Raymond McElroy. I live at 2355 Toquesta Lane. It's on the intersection of 27th Avenue, S1. I want to say thank you to all the advocates and other persons who came out tonight. It always means a lot. And I always want to give a shout out to Transit Alliance for the hard work they do, as well as, as well as FDOT's work. This is going to kind of read like a Christmas list, but I just want to note a couple of things. I'm with an advocacy group called No More Road Deaths Florida. Our mission's clearly stated in the name. It made me really happy to see the compass that FDOT presented tonight, that safety was paramount, and it kind of looked like the North Star. And it's kind of exciting to see that that's going to be the focus. Florida, as you guys know, has one of the worst pedestrian fatality rates in the country. So it's kind of nice that we're starting at the bottom, because it gives us a big way to grow and get better. I just wanted to ask, and I don't know if this is possible, but maybe we tie in and we think about tying into these work plans, the possibility of setting goals. And if we don't achieve those goals, then money automatically gets earmarked to get moved into safety. So every five years or every time we update these work plans, there's actual measurable results. So it's like a carrot-and-stick approach. Another big ask that I have is if we could remove all street bike lanes on the arterials. I've worked with some FDOT projects before in Broward County, where they were able to remove the bike lanes. And I understand it's a, I guess it's a state legislative thing or something, that they have to have these bike lanes. But in this case, in Broward, we switched them over to shared use paths. So we all, like, basically know that trains and cars, they operate best when they're grade-separated. But for some reason, we're not taking the same logic to bikes, and we're putting it in mixed situations, which isn't safe, and it's not faster for cars or bikes. It creates conflicts. And I've done extensive biking in the northwest quadrant of the county on some of those arterials, because I'm just curious what it feels like. And it's, you might as well get sponsored by Red Bull, because it's truly an adrenaline sport, specifically sitting in some of those keyholes before the intersection changes. I can't honestly think of something more dangerous feeling. Another thing I heard a while back, this is regards to US1. This is a different topic. I think it was a county official said that they recognize that US1 is changing. Development is getting denser on it, and that there might be some consideration for understanding how the traffic's going to flow, pedestrian traffic. Maybe if there are some enhancements to some of the intersections that are connecting to the Metro Rail, because the county's putting in the investment. So it'd be nice if FDOT was also able to meet the county halfway and said, and help basically enhance the county's investments in the transit by making it easier for the walking and biking population to reach it. And I got one last thing. This is just another little ask. I've noticed this, and I've tracked this road for a long time now. It's State Road 882 in West Palm Beach. I know it's not your guys' district, but I always bring it up to specifically officials in Broward and Palm Beach all the time. But it only has lane widths of nine feet. And statistically, there hasn't been any increased accidents on it versus our other arterials that are 10, 11, 12 feet. So I think it'd be kind of cool if FDOT took it under their wing to kind of study S882 and see if we can pull something out with empirical data to see if lower lane widths is safer for pedestrians. And that's all, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Walna?
Yes. Samuel Zamakona, if you can, please go ahead and click on the red mic next to your name. I see you've unmuted yourself. Can you hear us? Okay, you're unmuted again. We'll give you a few more minutes, Samuel, to work on that, and we'll go to the next person for now. William Quinlan, please go ahead and click on the red mic next to your name.
Wait, can you hear me? Is that good?
Yes, we can, loud and clear.
Great. Hi, thanks. By the way, I don't know, if the meeting is set to end at eight, like, do I have time to ask a question? I could just email it, and it's fine.
You have time.
We have time to answer, to ask the question.
Thank you so much. A lot of the, a lot of the comments and points that I would like to reiterate have already been raised. So the one question that I do have is sort of maybe a more basic question, just from my own understanding about how this all, how the process of transportation planning and funding and operation and maintenance works. I personally subscribe to the view of the Group Transportation for America that money should be spent first and foremost on maintenance before, like, charging fully ahead with new projects and with more lane miles added, more road widens. But I didn't, I didn't really figure out exactly how FDOT budgets and figures out how to spend its maintenance funding. So like, does, in the different buckets of funding that was already listed earlier on one of the slides, when they showed that, like, a billion dollars of projects in the next year is going to go specifically towards new projects. I assume that the new projects means new expansions, right? Whereas maintenance, it sounded like was part of the contractual duties of the construction companies that build the old projects, that they have ongoing maintenance obligations. And that is also considered separate from resurfacing. Can somebody just, like, I don't know, help me figure out what exactly does maintenance look like to FDOT, and how is that budgeted? And how is that demonstrated in the five-year plans? Like, all these projects, they're all like new expansionary projects. Do I have that right? Thank you.
So that's a very complicated answer. I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to boil that down as much as I can with some support from Rudy and Antoinette. The Department of Transportation's work program, while you saw it in a variety of different component areas, the maintenance funding is funded what we call off-the-top. That is the first thing the Florida Department of Transportation funds. It is first and foremost, besides safety, which we want to make sure the safety of all of our traveling public, the safety of our contractors and users of our roadways. But we fund maintenance first and foremost. So our goal is to maintain our existing system to a certain standard. And Rudy was talking about that. There are a variety of standards in state statute for our roadways, the swales of our roadways, et cetera, the, all of the right-of-way, as well as our bridges, and that's bridge maintenance and bridge replacement. So a lot of what you see in the work program, while there is a component for maintenance, there are many other aspects in all of those other buckets within the work program that are related to what we consider that overall maintenance program. So Bridge Rehabilitation Program, the Bridge Replacement Program, those don't necessarily, aren't, the Bridge Replacement Program's not necessarily associated with widening or adding lanes, but it is replacing the capacity that we already have with the goal, of course, of including additional modes, as many of our older bridges do not have bicycle and pedestrian features. The resurfacing program is considered as part of the arterial program or the interstate program. That is also a maintenance aspect. It is the preservation of the road network, as well as meeting Americans with Disabilities standards, improving our drainage system, making sure our signing and marking, signalization, lighting, et cetera, are up to our standards. So it's not really one singular bucket within the Department of Transportation's work program. It is actually in many of different components of the work that we do. So all of those other areas don't necessarily mean that we're adding capacity or adding lanes to our roadways. Much of what we do is, the bread and butter of the work that we do is the resurfacing program, just maintaining the system that we already have. That is, while there are expensive projects, they are much cheaper in nature. So when you do see a bridge replacement or a project in the nature of a widening or resiliency project on Alton Road or a Golden Glades interchange, they are a high-dollar-value type of project, just because of the nature of that type of construction. But the majority of what we do could be put into the maintenance component. And I'll ask Rudy and Antoinette to add to that response.
Stacy, I think you covered that very well. As Stacy had explained, the money for the maintenance comes off the top from our work program. And I haven't taken the exact look at the numbers for this year, but I know when it comes to, like, routine maintenance, being a previous maintenance engineer, another money that used to be allocated to us was a neighborhood of $50 to $60 million a year. And that's just for the routine maintenance. That doesn't include, obviously, the type of projects that Stacy has explained when you're doing. Basically, maintenance works when you're doing rehab of a bridge maintenance project or rehabilitation of it. That's money that's in addition to the routine maintenance dollars. And a lot of that money that we receive for routine maintenance is also dependent on the roadway characteristic inventory that we have. It's extensive database of our facilities. And based on the number of those facilities that we have, there's a predetermined amount that we get for those specific type of elements, whether it be guardrail, pavement striping, you know, reflective pavement markers and so forth. So it depends also on what we already have in our district. Would that all let Antoinette add anything?
I think you both, I think you both covered that very well. So there's really nothing much for me to say. All right. Thank you very much for that question. Let us go, Walna, to the next attendee who's online, who has their hand raised or who has or who has written, um, a question in the chat box.
Yes, um, I do see Mr. Samuel Zamakona. He raised his hand again. Go ahead and click on the red mic next to your name again, please. If you are speaking, we cannot hear you. Okay. Oh, yes, it appears she's still having audio issues. Okay, Tish, at this time, I do not see any additional hands raised online. And all questions from the question panel have been responded to.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask if anybody else here in the room wants to ask a question or has a comment for us. All right. With that being nobody here responding, I wanted to just let you know that this concludes our annual Work Program public hearing. Please be sure to submit your comment sheets before leaving the auditorium if you filled one out. If you have additional questions or comments, you can always call the Public Information Office at 305-470-5349. Or you can send an email to wpcomments@dotstate dot fl dot U S. Any of the comments that we receive after tonight's hearing will be responded to in a timely manner and will be part of the official record for this public hearing. And with that, we're going to leave it on a safety message.
With that, I also wanted to-
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I wanted to say thank you to everyone here in the room and everyone who has participated online. It's very important to us that we receive your feedback and that we work collaboratively with our communities to build the best transportation network that we possibly can. It is, it is not always an easy conversation, but it is a necessary conversation. And then we all understand each other's goals and objectives and we try to marry those as we move forward with building what is and should be a world-class transportation network here in District Six in Miami-Dade and Monroe County. So thank you for your participation.
And before we leave, we would like to leave you with a safety message. Please note that safety does not happen by accident. Eliminating roadway fatalities is the highest priority of the Department of Transportation and our traffic, traffic and safety partners. We recognize achieving zero fatalities and serious injuries will not be easy and will require commitment, energy, and innovation. We also acknowledge that some policies, procedures, and practices must change. Businesses as usual, business as usual is not enough and systemic changes are needed to make meaningful progress. With that, we'd like to thank you all again for joining us and please note that we will remain here for an additional 15 minutes in case someone has additional questions or comments or would like to speak with us about anything that we've discussed tonight. Thank you very much.